The March 1st meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome to everybody tonight, especially all the students in the audience. We'll try to make the meeting extra long so you get a lot out of it. No, I'm just joking. When my kids were in high school, we were having meetings that lasted till 11:30 at night. We'll probably be out of here by about 7:45, so. Every council meeting, we provide an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the council prior to the council meeting in these chambers. This portion of the meeting is not televised, and you do need to schedule yourself to address us at that time. So if you're interested in speaking to us on the first or third Tuesday of the month prior to the council meetings, please call the city manager's office at (952) 949-84, let's see, (12). By noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. The first thing on the agenda tonight is a proclamation, actually it's an acceptance of a donation for Miller Park Play Area. Mr. Lothammer.
Your Honor, council members, we've done this several different times, and the money continues to come in with the support from the members of the Garvin family and the Miller Foundation. As you know, Miller Park, several years ago, we began doing renovations there, making it a barrier-free play structure. And that was done with the help of the Millers and Garvins. And people continue to support the project. The third phase has been completed and will grand open as soon as it gets warm enough to turn on the water and test out some of the spray features. But this is for $1,200, and for this, people will be getting their names engraved in bricks, which are already in place, but we'll add some more bricks in place. And we think that this will continue to gain support over the years as well. You can, if you're interested, you can go to ashleyandfriends.com is the website, and that allows people to make donations right online. So we're happy that they were willing to continue with this project and that they continue to raise funds towards that play structure. So this motion would be to accept the gift from them.
Thank you. Here's our motion.
Move to accept the donation from the Tom and Kathy Miller Family Foundation in the amount of $1,200 to assist with funding for the future development of the Miller Park Barrier-Free Play Area.
Second. Any items to question or discuss? All in favor? Aye. This is another wonderful example of residents showing their commitment and participation in the city. It's wonderful. The next item is a Highway 494, 169 project update. We have some representatives from MINDOT here.
We do. This is a project that we've been talking about for quite some time, and you've seen it in our State of the City presentation, and we've been telling you it's about to get underway and is getting underway. And tonight, we have Michael Bear from MINDOT. He's the program manager, and he's here tonight to tell us more about the project and also show you some of the timing of the project, as well as some photos that'll help you and all of us better understand what's about to really start happening. So I'll turn it over to Michael.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. My name is Michael Bear. I am the project manager for MINDOT, 169, 494, design-build project. Get it up on the screen. A PowerPoint presentation, and there are some places where I'll point out some of the things on the screen as I go. I'll play the mouse comes through to show that to everyone here in the room and then also the folks at home. If you have questions as I go along, any new things I talk about, feel free to jump in.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
Just to start off for benefit of the students in the audience, could you explain what a design-build project is and what the benefits of it are?
Sure, I do get into that as I go.
Okay, no problem then.
Okay, we'll get to that. Good question now. Some of the topics I'm going to cover, overall timeline of the project, the interchange design itself, design-build, the process versus our typical process for projects, information on the project and the contractor's schedule and some of the design changes that they've done. It's been kind of a long and winding road for this particular interchange. County, what is now Highway 169 south of 494. Back in the 1990s, it was a county road. Hennepin County undertook a project to rebuild the road similar to what it is now, with the exception of the bridges at Anderson Lakes and Pioneer Trail. They were added a little bit later. The current interchange at 169 and 494 with the signals at the ramps that we know how they function now and the congestion they create, those were constructed in the late 1990s, again, kind of due to budgeting issues. That's all that could be afforded at the time, and it did provide improvement over what was there. This project was, 169, 494 was part of a bonding bill passed in, I believe, 2003, and it was meant to fully fund the 169, 494 interchange. Unfortunately, it was the last list of a number of other projects, including 212 and 494, that were funded ahead of it. So there was only enough money left in that bonding bill to do the bridges at Anderson Lakes and Pioneer Trail. So that took out the signals that were there at that time, which did improve traffic, but still left the congestion at the three signals we have on 169. This project did gain municipal consent. We still brought the process forward, our preliminary designs, working with the three cities that are affected by this project, Eden Prairie, Bloomington, and Edina. We received municipal consent from the cities that they agreed with the changes that we proposed to do, the impacts to the frontage road and local communities. There was a stimulus package passed in spring of 2009, which funded a number of transportation projects in the metro. This project was considered by MINDOT for one of those areas of funding. We had a disagreement with the FHWA at the time to the level of interchange that needed to be built here. The FHWA requires a full eight movement interchange between two freeways that connect. Two of those legs aren't served by maybe 5% or 10% of the people that use the interchange, and they've accounted for $15 to $20 million of the project. So we're trying to convince the FHWA to pursue a performance-based project where we're saying that $15 to $20 million would be better served somewhere else in the metro. There are alternatives to the movements here. We could not come to agreement with the FHWA on that, so this project ultimately didn't have enough funding left to do the full build interchange. So we lost out on an opportunity to build the project back in 2009. Spring of 2010, there was talk of another round of stimulus from the federal government. So again, this project was looked at, okay, we've advanced it, we think we're ready to go. Can we fund it this time with that project? And during this time, we still continued on talking to the Federal Highway Administration, did convince them, come to an agreement on a performance-based project that we could proceed with building six of the eight interchange movements here. And we would monitor performance of not the local road network, the local 212 network, 169, 62, a few items to monitor that would tell the FHWA and MINDOT when these missing moves are starting to affect the local commuters', performance of the other roads in the area. So that finally allowed us to move forward with a slightly less costly project that we were able to hopefully fund with this stimulus tube. Stimulus tube lost speed at the Senate and the House, I think, had passed it. So we looked at other funding attempts. MINDOT did want to pursue this project. We looked at, with the economy, the bidding environment had become favorable, so other projects that we had budgeted a higher amount had come in at lower levels. We had a few other ideas, and we had many backers in the area from between the cities, coalition corridors, the 169 coalition corridor, that helped us come up with a conglomerated funding attempt. We basically looked under every rug and pillow we could find to come up with the money for the project. So that did allow the project proceed. In spring of 2010, we issued a request for proposals. We moved it along quickly to three contractors. They had three months to put their cost proposals and design proposals together. We left the project in September 30th of 2010, awarded the contract about a month later, and the bidding requirements for the contract had to be completed, construction fully completed by August 31st of 2013. The team that was selected bid the project to complete it by November 15th of 2012, so approximately nine months ahead of the schedule that was allowed. So we're happy with that. I talked about the performance-based versus the full build interchange. Try and show it on here with the mouse. The two system moves that direct system, the system moves that aren't being built are, this is looking north on 169, are eastbound 494 to go northbound 169, and then the opposing move, southbound 169, to go westbound 494. Those won't have the direct flyover ramps. As I mentioned, there's maybe 100 peak hour, 100 vehicles in the peak rush hour that use those moves, where the other system ramps have 1,000 to 1,200 people. So it's a fairly low volume that does those movements. And the reason it's a fairly low volume is if you look at the general area of 169, 494 interchange is down here. The people that would be coming to and coming from and going to the southwest metro, if they wanted to go north on 169, they would most likely take the 212 route up to 62 and 169. There's only one local interchange on 169 between 62 and 212, and there's only two partial interchanges on 494 between 212 and 494. So it's mainly the local commuters and users that would use those ramps. So there is the opportunity that those are better served on the 212 connection. It's a faster, quicker route. A little bit on what the existing interchange looks like versus what it will look like in the future. On the left, you can see the current interchange out there, just to give you an idea. This is looking south, so you have the Vikings facility over here in this building, Anderson Lakes, the 169 slices through as you go south of 494. And you have what we proposed on, or what the construction will essentially look like on the right. Couple of things to note. On the left here, there's three existing loops at the interchange. This one in the northwest quadrant, in the new design, it goes away, and it's replaced by a flyover bridge to go from westbound 494 to southbound. That has a number of benefits. You can keep traffic speeds up higher on the flyover bridge versus slowing down to go through a loop. And the real improvement is not having two loops side by side like that, where you have we entering and exiting traffic weaving in that short distance between the loops, both down on 494 and then also up on top on 169 southbound. Another thing you'll notice is Washington Avenue that comes by the Vikings currently stops at 494, and you can only head west on the local frontage road. Just on the edge of the 3D rendering, Washington Avenue will have a new bridge that crosses 494. The signals that are currently at the ramps to 494 go away, as well as a signal that's at Town Line and Highwood, and those are replaced for the local road network by a ring road. Get the mouse to work. So continuing south on Washington Avenue, you will be able to follow the frontage road through a series of roundabouts and under 169. That'll connect over to Marth Road, and also then you could, on the north side, that's connected by West Bush Lake, again, the new roads are replaced as frontage roads under 169. You see there's six roundabouts in the design. That's kind of a evolution of the project over the course of the last year or so. Originally, those were showed to be signalized intersections. So you'd have four signalized intersections that are fairly closely spaced. That creates some problems with potential queuing at the red lights. Also, as the design evolved and we had better handle on traffic volumes, projected traffic volumes over the next 20 years, some of those intersections didn't warrant signals, and MINDOT as a policy doesn't build a signal system if it's not warranted 20 years out. There'd be either a four-way stop sign or a two-way stop, or in some cases where we have a three-legged intersection, a one-way stop. Again, if you have a mixture of intersection control devices, that's not good either. Again, it can lead to backups. So we went with the roundabout approach. That helps with the close proximity. It keeps traffic more or less continuously flowing through them, and it keeps all intersections the same design. It plans for the next 20 years' worth of traffic. While we're talking about roundabouts, just a little education. Part of our project, we do have a public information aspect to it. As we get closer to opening some of these roundabouts, there's a public information coordinator who works with the contractor on this project. Talking about having a roundabout cafes and other ways to educate the users of these roundabouts. Roundabouts are new to a lot of people, especially having six of them in sequence like this. But just a couple rules for roundabouts. As you approach the roundabout, there'll circle, there'll be yield signs, so you want to yield to the traffic that's in the roundabout. So the two key things to remember is anyone that has entered the roundabout has the right-of-way. You don't want to do Minnesota nice where you stop and wave someone in in front of you. That just creates problems by you potentially being rear-ended and other people not keeping the flow continuously moving. So you continue within the roundabout until you get to your exit, and then you exit. If you're waiting to yield, you wait till there's a sufficient gap to get into the roundabout. Some of these will be multilane roundabouts, meaning it's not just a single lane in the circle. Some of them will have two lanes side by side in the circle. If you're waiting to yield, you're supposed to yield to both lanes, even if you just want to enter the gap in the outside lane. We do know there'll be some challenges with these. There's definitely a learning curve. We think, confident that they'll work well over the long term, but I'm sure in the first few weeks as we open them up, there will be issues. Congestions, hopefully not accidents, but there is that potential. That's the other advantage to a roundabout versus a standard T-intersection, is when accidents do happen, they're generally at lower speeds, at softer angles, so you don't have a T-bone accident. There's less injuries and less property damage. This is another drawing of our 3D rendering of the design. We find these 3D renderings are real helpful to the public versus just looking at a flat plan view. You can understand which bridges go over what roads. When we're just showing them on our typical construction plans, people always have that question. I wanted to point out another couple things here. Again, you can see the six roundabouts in the ring road system. There is a bike path or sidewalk that will go all the way around this ring road system, cross over the Washington Avenue Bridge, continue around again under 169. So it'll be a definite benefit for pedestrians, bicycle users. And also in these two residential areas, south of 494 along 169, the Friendship Village neighborhood here on the east, and the Ensign neighborhood on the west, we do have both visual barrier and noise barrier along there for those residents to help improve the sound impacts that they do have. One more thing I can point out on this drawing or this layout, I mentioned about the two missing moves, direct system-to-system moves. Those moves still can be made through the local network, so if you're heading southbound on 169, you can still exit off to the local frontage road, and you just continue right around the roundabout and get onto westbound 494. So we don't see that as a big impact, again, especially for the traffic volumes we expect. To go eastbound 494 to northbound 169 is a little more complicated. Get the mouse back here. You would exit again off to the local road, which would be called Washington Avenue Exit. You enter the local road system, the roundabout, and you just follow through the roundabouts, cross Washington Avenue, through the third roundabout, continue north on Washington till you get to Valley View, and then you would get on 169 northbound at the Valley View interchange. Little bit on the project information, just some interesting facts. Again, this is our typical 2D layout. It's a little hard to know what bridges go over, what bridges go under, but the roadway system, there'll be six roundabouts added to the local road network, creating a complete ring road, utilizing the new Washington Avenue Bridge and the existing West Bush Lake Road Bridge to the east of this interchange. Drainage, Nine Mile Creek runs through the project just north of 494. It's an environmentally sensitive area. There's a handful of wetlands in this area that we're trying to build around. We have numerous ponds on the project. If you look within the interior of the interchange, you see all those little blue spots. Those are all either existing or new ponds we have to treat the stormwater that runs off the roads, comes through this project before it enters Nine Mile Creek. Right-of-way, we had numerous right-of-way acquisitions in some of the areas that are residential. We acquired, I believe, four houses that had to be demolished or will be demolished. Two of them have been, two more will be, to make way for the improvements. We had one two-story office building that was moved last May. Other than that, most of the impacts are limited to strip takings along the commercial businesses and other properties that bought this. That was another advantage to roundabouts, is we were able to keep two lanes in and out of these intersections versus two-through lanes, potentially two-left-turn lanes, widening out the intersections, impacting more of the properties in the area. That said, trying to keep the property acquisitions to a minimum, it's still estimated to cost us $16 to $17 million in right-of-way acquisition just for this project. The bridges, there's 12 bridges in all that'll be affected, four flyover-type bridges, three bridges that are widening, and five more of our conventional bridges you see around the metro. There's extensive utility relocations on this project. That was part of the reason we allowed the contractor almost three complete construction seasons to build this project. We had given, like I mentioned earlier, we'd given them till August 31st of 2013. The utility relocations that MINDOT has to pay for due to the interstate utility accommodation policy is in the neighborhood of $11 million. For example, Quest has a central hub nearby. They have massive lines that run all over the metro coming out of this project. Everywhere we go on this project, building new roads, retaining walls, et cetera, we hit their facilities. They had said it could take them up to a year and a half to relocate their utilities out of the way before we can start building the complete project. So contractors and working on creative schedules, staging techniques, and working with the utilities, again, was able to cut the total duration of the project down to two years. We're happy with that. Noise, I talked about the residential noise walls that will be constructed as part of the project. The visual quality, so the architectural treatment that'll be on the retaining walls, the bridges, that will match essentially the existing 494 corridor in the area. Again, I can reference East Bush Lake Road and West Bush Lake Road, what the bridges there look like, what the retaining walls along there look like. We will try and match that. We produced 3D renderings to help the public get a feeling of what the project will look like. We've done some traffic modeling to show what the drive-throughs will be. I'll get to a couple of those. And I'd mentioned Friendship Village in the southeast corner earlier. This picture here in the lower right is actually a picture from out of one of their, it's either the second or third story, building window. And we took the picture of what it looks like today and then superimposed what it'll look like here in the future with the noise wall in front of them and being able to see the flyover bridges in the distance. Gives them an idea of what they will be seeing in the future before it actually goes up. And that's not always what they want to see, but at least it won't come as a complete shock to them when the project is done. Couple of other challenges of the project. There's a high water table in this area. 494, where it goes under 169 now, is only about four feet above the water table. We're building the two new frontage roads under 169, so they will be in that same general elevation. There are also organics buried, peat, which is poor soil to construct on in the area. So it presents a number of challenges as you're building these bridges, tile retaining walls, abutment fills, et cetera, to deal with this. Also, an important component of the project is the full build compatibility. I mentioned the two missing system moves, and that will monitor traffic in the area, and at some point in the future, MINDOT may need to construct those two missing moves. We've set this project up such that it'll be relatively seamless to build those two missing moves. All the roadway alignments, the retaining walls, the drainage and ponds, utility relocations, those will be set up such that those two missing bridges can essentially just be fit in without having to close the ramps that they will tie into detouring traffic. There'd be some minimal impacts, but again, it would be very minimal. And the other nice feature about this project is, we agreed with the cities that the retaining walls and bridges and ponds would accommodate expansion of the frontage road system to two lanes in all directions between any of these six roundabouts, including the roundabouts. So if that need should ever happen in the future, you can be assured that you won't have to rebuild the bridge or tear down a retaining wall and impact traffic. Some of the 3D renderings, this is the first project I've had where we've been able to take our 3D renderings and overlay, in this case, we've overlaid in-place utilities. I talked about the extensive utility relocation. And you can see the various lines that are on there. What MINDOT had done is go out to establish where all the existing utility locations are, map that out on this 3D rendering, so you can see in three dimensions where these utilities are. Right now, they're running either alongside 169 or under the existing frontage road, so once you do our new widening, you can see that the utilities are under the new freeway. They're going through retaining walls, they're going through pond bottoms. You can see where they're near trees, people's backyards. So it gives another thing to look at, like I said, other than just a two-dimensional plan, for the builders and the utility companies to know what their challenges are, where potential relocation areas are. Mayor had asked about design-build versus our typical way of doing projects. We use the design-build best value method for this project. Design-build is different than our traditional way of design-bid-build. In the traditional way, MINDOT or we hire a consultant to do the design of the contracts. We essentially lay out the complete construction plans, quantities, and then we issue those for the contractors to bid on. They know exactly what they're building. They know exactly what quantities are supposed to go into it, and then we take the lowest bidder of whoever submits a bid for our project. On design-build best value, the design of the project is combined with the construction of the project as one contract. So we issue a set of rules and a preliminary design, so they know what to build. Then each of the teams that we shortlist to say they're qualified to bid on this project, they get together with their designers, their construction folks, and come up with tweaks to the project, what they think are innovative ideas. They can try to shorten the schedule, which some of them did. The nice part about it is it allows for innovation and flexibility, but it also gets, in this case, we had three teams, so three sets of smart individuals, designers, contractors, looking at what can they do to take advantage of producing a better project, a lower-cost project, quick turning it around quicker. The other nice feature is design and construction occur at the same time once the project is let. For instance, on this project, they're working on design. They'll begin starting bridge piling next week on one of the Anderson Lakes bridges, the bridges over Anderson Lakes. They've designed the piling and the footing and substructure of those bridges. They still haven't finished designing the deck. That'll occur while the construction is ongoing, just an example of what occurs throughout the project. It also helps reduce claims due to design errors. The contractor is the designer. They're not taking someone else's design. Any errors that are in the design are their responsibility. And another nice aspect is since they've designed it, they've constructed it, we have a three-year warranty, where they warrant that the work they did, there won't be any issues with workmanship or materials, otherwise they come out and repair it during those three years. We had three teams that were shortlisted to bid on the project. Those three teams were a joint venture of Ames and Lundt. They're both local contractors, local to the metro area. McCrossan and Kramer, also another joint venture, local to the area, and Welch Construction, who is a construction firm out of Chicago. When we opened the bids, they submitted technical proposals. We scored those proposals based on time, innovation, staging, various other things. And you can see that Ames-Lundt had the highest score. They also had the highest price, and the parent best value is the lowest adjusted score. So we take the price divided by the technical score, and the lowest number there on that far-right column determines the winner. The team that was selected as the winner is McCrossan-Kramer. They had the second-highest technical score, but they did have the lowest cost. The city of Eden Prairie's share of the project cost, I guess I could point out on the other slide, the lowest bid was $125.28 million. That was also the best value. That is the cost of the project to design it and construct it. Eden Prairie's share of that project cost is $2.95 million, roughly 2.36%. You guys did have an advantage of going with a percentage of what the ultimate bid was. Our original cost estimate was higher than that $125 million. It was about $141 million. Again, due to contractor innovation and I think also a good bidding environment with the economy, the prices came in lower, so you guys also benefited from that. The $2.95 million covers essentially the expansion of the local roadways, the sidewalk, the new Washington Avenue Bridge from what exists out there today. So if you have a two-lane frontage road and it's being reconstructed as a four-lane frontage road, you share in the cost of that additional capacity and pavement. Again, includes a portion of the roundabouts, also some of the right-of-way that we had to acquire to accommodate that additional expansion beyond what's out there today, retaining walls and stormwater treatment. So something I'm sure everyone is interested in, the tentative construction schedule of the project. This past November and December, they did a little This past November and December, they did a little bit of temporary bypass work out there on some of the ramps that go from 494 to 169. So that's February 2011, they're gonna start bridge and retaining wall work. That'll actually, probably, actually happen in the field now, this, later this week. Then the first half of 2011, they're regonna, going to reconstruct the northbound Highway 169. So between now and probably early May, they're gonna widen the existing southbound 169 on the south side, so that can accommodate four lanes of traffic versus the two that are there now. Once that is widening, they'll take both the northbound and the southbound 169 traffic and put that all on the existing southbound. During that time, approximately three months, they will completely reconstruct northbound 169, new bridges, new pavement, et cetera. Then they'll flop that traffic over, so that all the northbound and southbound traffic will be on northbound traffic. In the second half of 2011, they'll completely reconstruct the southbound side of 169. So during this time, they will keep the signal systems at the two 494 ramps and Highwood Town Line in place, moving them around as the traffic moves around. But essentially, local access will remain the same as it is today. Access to and from 169, 494 will more or less remain as it is today. But then by the end of 2011, those three signals will go away, 169 will become free-flowing, so that'll be a happy day for everyone. A little bit more on the construction. On 169, they're required to maintain two lanes of traffic in each direction, essentially during the, the daytime hours when traffic peaks are high. At night, they can take those down to a one lane in each direction. It's a necessity just to accommodate the construction needs. There are times that, that one lane will need to be closed. 494 will have essentially three lanes maintained the whole time. Right now, it's either three or four lanes out there in the project area, depending on where you are. And during, also during 2011, the flyover bridge from westbound 494 to southbound 169 will be constructed. Then the remaining flyover ramps will be constructed in the 2011, 2012 construction season. There will be some construction on the local road network and roundabouts this year, and then the remaining portion will be completed next year. Again, the completion of the project is expected to be November 15th, 2012. Here we have a traffic simulation of, this is MINDOT's preliminary design. We put in our traffic volumes there, 20 years out, to show how the network will function. You can see how traffic is using the flyover bridges, and some of the, some traffic ends up on the local road network. I guess one thing I'd like to point out again with the contractor staging, and this is gonna be unique and interesting this winter. For, for living in Prairie, we'll, we'll concentrate on eastbound 494 to southbound 169. In the future, there will be this flyover ramp that takes traffic directly between the two. That ramp will not be constructed until sometime during the 2012 construction season. So this winter, what they propose to do is build the local road networks, so these roundabouts would be here. Hopefully, everyone can see the mouse. So what they're gonna do is route the local and freeway traffic that wants to go between the two, between 169 and 494, onto this roundabout. So traffic that wants to continue going southbound 169 will have to navigate through the roundabout and go on 169. Similar for northbound 169, the flyover bridge isn't there yet, that traffic movement will be mixed in with the local network, just to get through the roundabout and onto the freeway. For the winter, this winter and into sometime next year, they've modeled the traffic. It shows that it will work, but I'm sure it will be a challenge, especially given winter and in the first few weeks of people becoming used to that process. Again, roundabouts are new. Some of these volumes will be fairly high, but it will be certainly a test of the roundabout system. Something that as, as that day approaches, we'll be publicizing to the public and everyone that lives and works in the area. Project information. We have resources available that people can get access or information to the project basically any time of the day. We have an information line, the number is listed there. That, that line is answered live daily from nine to five. It's always answered 24 hours a day. You can leave a message and someone will get back to you. You can email at the address there. We have the project website that has the various animation models I've showed, as well as the stills. There's a fly overview where essentially a helicopter flies you around the project. You can see it from all directions. And also on that website, you can click there to receive email updates. So you click on that, enter your email, and then you'll get a weekly update on the project to let you know what's happening, what's changing. If you drive through the interchange, it's, I think, a very valuable tool to know a couple weeks ahead of time that one of your accesses may change, what the detour route would be. We also have a project office located over in Adana, where both the designers and MINDOT is located. It's a snapshot of the project website there, again, and the right-hand side there, that little kind of orange button you can click for an email update. We do also have, suggest green technology on our product to reduce our carbon footprints. So this is a construction, construction technique that the contractors may wish to consider. You can see the carbon footprint there is extremely low, but I don't know what country this was in. I got, it was emailed to me, I don't know what country it's in, but obviously, I don't think labor rates there as high as they are here. And I, I can open up the questions as this animation plays. It plays for a few minutes here, but you can see the camera path where we're heading northbound on 169, exiting off onto the local road system there, Washington Avenue, and taking the, the roundabouts through the project. One thing you notice is there is no traffic, so it's a little deceiving on what it'd be like driving through the roundabouts. But, but this gives you a real sense now in 3D of what, what it'll be like. This is just on the west side of Friendship Village now. You can see the height of this retaining wall. It gets up to potentially thirty to forty feet. There's a wooden noise wall on top of it. You'll drive under the flyover bridges coming up here. This was MINDOT's preliminary design, so the piers that you're seeing right now, the contractor's pure design will be a little bit different. The bridge structures themselves will, as far as the beams, will be a little bit different. And as they're completing their design, we will update this rendering to show you what it's actually gonna look like. Here, you're on the frontage road, driving under the new 169 bridges. So as you watch this, like, entertain any questions from?
Sure. Any questions, council?
No questions, but just a comment that this has been a long time coming, and we're very excited for the changes and looking forward to the improvement in the, in the traffic situation for the metro and the whole state as a, as a region. So thank you and look forward to all the, seeing all the progress being made.
Yeah. Thank you. Great presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for the opportunity.
All right. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to add?
Just one, Your Honor, under Councilmember Reports, which is 14A.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor of the agenda is amended?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held on Tuesday, February 15th?
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes to the city council meeting held on its same date?
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Next, we have a report from the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission. Mr. King.
Good evening, Your Honor and council members. Great to be here again. Thanks for the chance to speak tonight about the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission. Earlier today, we submitted our report for 2010, recapped the year, and also proposed our goals for 2011 and the work plan. I'd like to provide some highlights for everybody about the year. Busy year with the airport. We did a complete security review again, like we do every other year. There were no issues found in the airport. Has keyed accesses, access, keypad access at every gate. So the, the team that looked at it, which included the chiefs of police, fire for the city, FAA, TSA, and the MAC, as well as our own commission, believe it's probably never been safer. The runway expansion projects are done, as they are complete, and the landscaping around those has grown up, and I think that we'll see that being quite a bit better this year as the maturity of the grass and the trees take hold. I'm also told that many of those are under warranty, so if any of them died through this very tropical winter we've had, I'm sure they'll be replaced. The appearance, not only the landscape improved, but the, a lot of hangers on the airfield also were improved during the time. Saw the knockdown of a lot of the older ones that came with the airport many, many years ago, and the rebuilding of things that are more aesthetically pleasing, modern, and also consistent with city code today. The airport this year had operations that were approximately 20% less than 2010, and it act, or 2009, 2009. And in fact, this is the first year that the airport operations were under 100,000 operations since the 80s. So that continues to go down. In fact, since 2006, we're now down 35%. So there's a lot fewer planes out there flying. Terms of noise, which is a consideration and a annoyance for a lot of residents, complaints this year were up 9%, which is up less than it has been in the past. The number of complaints, which would be the number of households registering complaints, was actually down 32% year-over-year. What that indicates is that still for a few of our residents, there's, the airport noise is an important consideration. Overall complaints over the years continue to go up, and overall complaints continue to go down, as a statistic. The MAC funded something called a multilateration system, which is a piece of technology that has better sensors at the airfield and all around it, and is going to allow us to track aircraft much more accurately and map them to residential complaints, so that we can be very precise when we talk to residents about what the, the aircraft operation was that they actually complained about. And finally, in the survey that was given this year by the city on various topics, two of the top, two of the questions have something to do with the airport, and it was a noticeable change over the last three surveys, this being the third year that I'm going to talk about every other year. The very serious nature recorded, very serious airport issue has gone down from 10%. We rated it very serious in 2006 to 2% in 2010. So we're pleased that people have seen through the, perhaps the less operations, perhaps through the ability to report when they do have an issue, and the follow-up that we and the MAC do on those things, that they feel better about what's going on in total. So we also recognize, as I close up here, that MAC, the Metropolitan Airport Commission, who is the owner of the airport, unlike some people think that the city has jurisdiction over it, has sort of limited control, as all of you well know, has been a really great partner over the years. We've been able to work with them cooperatively, and through, I think, that cooperation over the last five years, we've gotten a lot of things done that are actually better for the airport and better for the community at the same time. And I would encourage that, that kind of cooperation continue. Thank you all for your support, for your support during all the meetings, formal and informal, and all of the workshops that we've had, and particularly to me as the chair for the last five years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Rick, for your years of participation and leadership.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to receive the Flying Cloud Airport Advisor Commission report?
So moved.
Second.
And this would include approval of the goals and work plan?
Okay.
All in favor of motion?
Aye.
The motion passes. Motion for approval on the consent calendar?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to question or pull for discussion, Mr. Lotthammer? Nope? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. We have a public hearing, a resolution approving the use of 2011 CDBG funds, Community Development Block Grant funds. Mr. Lotthammer?
Your Honor, council members, I'd call your attention to a golden rod sheet. There was a incorrect number on the original sheet that you received. If you look under number two in the grid, YMCA, the actual number is 10,500. Everything else that refers to the YMCA was that in the rest of the report that you received. I would ask Ms. Jeremiah to give you a general idea of this item and any comments you'd like to make.
Your Honor, council members, this is the annual action on the 2011 CDBG funds. At this time of year, we need to take action. However, we only have an estimate of what our allocation will be, and our estimate at this time is $250,000. And of that, 15% can be spent on human service activities, and we do have a number of proposals for contract for services. And we can also utilize 15% of our program income from last year. So we are recommending a total of $53,000 allocated towards the human service activities. And you can see the, the various groups, Prop at $25,000, YMCA childcare for eligible families, $10,500, the Home, household and outside maintenance for the elderly, $8,000, HomeLine, which is a tenants advocacy service, $5,000, and CAPS for the emergency vehicle repair program at $4,500. And then there are also various housing activities that we use consistently year after year. The Housing Rehab Deferred Loan Program is one that has been around for a long time. We're also proposing a first-time homebuyer program, which is a replacement of a program we had last year. It's kind of a tweaking of a program that we had last year, again, to assist families with forwarding to actually purchase homes. And the Fair Housing Initiative is, again, a consistent 25,000 amount that we need to allocate towards that per HUD requirements. And then program administration, we try to keep to no more than 10%. And that's a little bit less than the county would charge us 13% if they were to administer the, the program for us. So we do try to keep that as efficient as possible. And I will point out that Molly Quavamaki, our manager of housing and community services, is here this evening, as well as representatives of the various agencies that I believe would like to speak briefly to their programs and also help answer any questions that you may have. And oh, one more thing that I did want to point out, we had a citizen, Mr. Weisner, actually point out that in the synopsis, it does say that if the amount changes, the Human Service Review Committee would reconvene to determine how the funds would be reallocated. That would actually better be stated to recommend to the council how those funds would be reallocated. We will bring any changes back to you for final approval, unless you want to give specific direction to that group. Sometimes in the past, we've done a percentage allocation, but we're comfortable with just bringing it back to you.
Okay. Ms. Jeremiah, is there any drastic change from this year to last year in terms of the percentage allocated to each organization?
Uh, no, there's not any drastic changes, I don't believe, but not every agency is recommended for full funding due to the limited funding. For example, YMCA requested $15,000, and the HSRC has recommended $10,500. Home has requested $9,000, they're recommended for $8,000. And, let's see, CAPS requested $15,000, and they are recommended for $4,500. And that has been a very well-utilized program. Again, it's just difficult to, to give everyone what they need and request each year, but Prop and HomeLine are recommended for the full request, although I have to say that there are other contributors to those programs. We are not the only ones providing support to those programs.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Jeremiah? Mr. Alho?
I would, Ms. Jeremiah, could you just please, for our audience here and then at home, could you describe where this funding is coming from?
Yes, this is our Community Development Block Grant, and it is a pass-through from the federal government Housing and Urban Development Office.
Thank you.
And they give us money specifically for affordable housing activities, and also, as I said, a maximum of 15% towards human service agency activities. And those are contract for services. They have to show that they are providing services to the residents of Eden Prairie.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council? Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the issue of the CDBG funding? Ann?
Thank you, ma'am, and council. On behalf of Prop, my name is Ann Harnack, and I'm the executive director, and I want to thank you for previous support of CDBG funding for Prop to prevent homelessness in Eden Prairie. In 2010, we prevented homelessness 157 times. And so the CDBG funding is essential to keep our families in Eden Prairie in their homes, while we also provide basic needs services as they work toward self-sufficiency goals. So I thank you for your consideration. Do you have any questions?
No. No, thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Rob Kullard, I'm with the South of YMCA, and I just want to say thank you for your past support through the CDBG funds. We've given funding over $75,000 for people to participate in our programs through scholarships, and this money comes and helps us to meet that goal, and we provided over 30 different youth and families to participate with that money. So any support, deeply appreciated. Any questions?
Thank you. The great program, longstanding in Eden Prairie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council members, my name is Beth Cottleboy, I'm the director of HomeLine. We provide tenant advocacy hotline for the residents that are renters of Eden Prairie. Last year, we helped 132 families in Eden Prairie. 28 of them were facing dire situations where the landlord was under foreclosure or they were facing eviction. So we're dealing with some pretty serious issues with the economy the way it is now, so we want to thank you for your support and being able to help those families. And we also have a renter education program that we present in the high schools.
Thank you, Beth.
Good evening. I'm Scott Zemke with Community Action Partnership of Suburban Hennepin. You're considering funding for the car repair program. It's a partnership that we've had with Eden Prairie for four years now. It is funding that is passed directly to the residents of Eden Prairie. Community Action Partnership does not take any administrative funds at all to, to do this program, so it's a, it's a very, it's a good benefit for, for the working poor out here who do run into transportation issues with their cars. Happy to answer any questions about the program.
Any questions? Thank you for your work in Eden Prairie.
Yes, thank you.
Hello. Honorable mayor and council members, I am Kitty Engel. I work for Senior Community Services as the program director for HOME. And HOME, of course, stands for Household and Outside Maintenance for Elderly. Our program's been around a long time, 30 years now, and our workers make it possible for residents to avoid premature nursing home placement by providing the chores that our clients no longer can do for themselves. Those include homemaking, which could be scrubbing floors, cleaning bathrooms, laundry, grocery shopping, small repairs, fixing some of those leaky faucets, and putting safety bars in the bathroom, fixing railings so that they're tight and safe, and, and now it'll be maybe, if we ever have summer, installing air conditioners. We also have a painter that paints inside and outside of homes. We do mowing and snow removal, and believe me, we have been doing a lot of snow removal. We have volunteers that help us in the spring and the fall that do yard cleanup, raking, window washing. Last year, we helped about 30 residents in Eden Prairie with those chores, and they performed about 1,282 hours of service for those clients. We do have a sliding fee scale, so residents are able to contribute toward the cost of their service based on their ability to pay. We use the CDBG funds to help support that sliding scale. We also don't charge our clients if we have volunteers, and they usually come for the spring and the fall raking. We want to thank you for your support over the years and hope to maintain a great working relationship with the city of Eden Prairie. I'd like to give out our phone number in case you have, audience that are listening. Our number to call would be 952-888-5530, the HOME program.
And that number is for volunteering or for getting help?
That's right.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we close the public hearing?
I have a couple hundred questions, so be patient, folks. No, just teasing, I'm trying to get to unscheduled mayor. My name is Basil Wiener, 8293 Mitchell Road, Mayor, City Council Members Staff. As I've said in the past, I'll say it again, I still understand why it takes 10% to run this program. But I have the opportunity to visit with Molly, and I'm going to do that and dig into it, because it just doesn't make sense that we need to do all this paperwork. But apparently, council member Butcher Wickstrom, one of your goals for 2011, if my memory serves me correct, is to come up with some ingenuity and technology to make our government more efficient. So here's a challenge for you. You're going to have to help me work through this problem. I'll do everything I can as a volunteer. But I do want to conclude with one thing. It's my understanding that because we don't have the final number for the CDBG funding from the government, this is preliminary approval, not final. And when we get the final number, staff will come back with the final number, correct? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution approving the use of 2011 CDBG funds as recommended by the Eden Prairie Human Services Committee.
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, your honor.
Mr. Case?
My understanding, just listening to the news, is that there's some proposed bills floating around Congress to majorly severely cut CDBG funding. Is that 2012? Does that have any potential impact for 2011? What would that look like if, if we did see severe cuts? And some of these programs need a lot of help, so do, do you know anything about that?
Your honor, council member Case, we are hearing that there are some proposals to cut CDBG substantially. It could impact 2011 funding, since those allocations have not been finalized. So if you have an interest in maintaining this program, you probably should contact congresspeople and express-
I believe it's in the House, is what it's coming out right now.
Express that interest. That's, that's my understanding as well, and Molly may have more detailed current information on that. We have had proposals that have been drastic cuts to CDBG in the past, and there have been cuts that have been less drastic, but our numbers have dwindled over the last several years, so there have been some reductions already. So at this point, you know, we're not in full panic mode, because, again, we have faced this before, and it, it does tend to be a program that's, that's very easy to show the types of benefits that come directly to residents of, of our communities through their federal tax dollars. So hopefully, you know, we will see the program maintained. I do want to point out, if it does happen to come out to be exactly $250,000, it would be our intent to just allocate exactly as you proposed tonight, but we assume it will probably be different, so it will most likely come before you. I just wanted to, to clarify that for, for Basil's sake. And again, we don't know for sure, there could be drastic cuts, but we do hope that it's, it's at least in the range of 250,000.
Okay. There's a motion and a second? All in favor of motion?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item is payment of claims, by which we approve the checks and the bills that the city does every month.
Move approval.
Second. Roll call, please. Yeah, well, first of all, any items to question under the payment of claims? Thank you. Roll call. Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher Wickstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Terlukens? Aye. Under appointments tonight, we have the wonderful opportunity to appoint a lot of community members to some of our boards and commissions. Mr. Lotthammer?
Yes, your honor, based on council interviews, we were able to take your feedback and direction, and we have constructed a motion with all commission members that you had indicated. Listed on the motion, it's on your golden rod sheet, and it would be done as one motion in order to do all of the commission members. Then we'll handle the commission chairs and vice chairs on a separate motion later on in the agenda.
Okay, thank you. I think Mr. Aho is going to start with the motion, and then each person will be reading the line for a particular commission.
Okay, to start this out, I would move to appoint to the Arts and Culture Commission, Lee Elliott Storing and Cynthia Paulson, with terms expiring on March 31st, 2014.
To the Conservation Commission, Kurt Lawton and Anthony Peeny, with terms expiring on March 31st, 2014, and Ray Daniels, with the term expiring on March 31st, 2012.
To the Flying Cloud Airport Commission, Carol Hanson, Keith Tishol, and John Pratton, with terms expiring on March 31st, 2014.
To the Heritage Preservation Commission, Kate DeMaris, Cindy Everett, and Ed Muehlberg, with terms expiring on March 31st, 2014.
And to the Human Rights and Diversity Commission, PJ Narayan and Xena Norakadi, with terms expiring March 31st, 2014.
To the Parks, Recreation and Natural Resources Commission, Jerry Napek and David Rosa, with terms expiring on March 31st, 2014.
And finally, to the Planning Commission, John Kirk, Matt Fytin, Katie LaCelt, and John Stoltz, with terms expiring March 31st, 2014.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Next, we have the Board of Adjustment, or pardon me, the Board of Appeal and Equalization.
Formerly known as the Board of Review, this is also a citizen volunteer opportunity, and there are members that are indicated in the motion for this, and it's a fairly stable commission, as recruited by city manager and also by the city assessor.
Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to appoint to the Board of Appeal and Equalization, Brian Duos, Jim Johnson, Lyndon Moquist, Annette O'Connor, Patricia Pidcock, for the period of April 1st, 2011 through May 31st, 2011, or until the Board of Appeal and Equalization completes its work.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Chairs and vice chairs of commissions. Mr. Lotthammer?
Yes, this is to determine who will be the chair and vice chair, as previously discussed by the council for each commission. I should also let you know that for all of these commissions, we will be giving them notice in a letter that we would expect that they would receive Friday or Saturday is the likely time with the mail, but they'll receive written notice if they have been selected for the commission and/or if they've also been appointed to the leadership role of chair or vice chair. So that will go out fairly quickly.
Kathy?
I'd move to appoint Farida Kathwala, Chair, and Tonya Bevins, Vice Chair of the Arts and Culture Commission.
And Laura Jester, Chair, and Greg Olson, Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission.
And Jeff Larson, Chair, and Mark Michelson, Vice Chair of the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission.
Ann Higgins, Chair, and Ed Muehlberg, Vice Chair of the Heritage Preservation Commission.
Pam Loespera, Chair, and Peter Huck, Vice Chair of the Human Rights and Diversity Commission.
Jerry Napek, Chair, and Hutch Coburn, Vice Chair of the Parks, Recreation and Natural Resources Commission, and?
John Stoltz, Chair, Jerry Pittsrick, Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
The motion passes. Chair and vice chair of the Board of Appeal and Equalization. Do you want a motion?
Just want a motion, yes?
Yeah.
That'd be fun.
I move to appoint Patricia Pidcock, Chair, and Brian Duos, Vice Chair of the Board of Appeal and Equalization.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Mr. Case, you had a report.
Yeah, real briefly, I don't know if you all saw on your electronic FYI packet this week, but they had a section about the potential pre-zoning for the Flying Cloud Airport zoning, Joint Zoning Commission. And there was a parcel on there on the far eastern side numbered parcel number seven. And I never become aware of parcel number seven, really, I just didn't realize it was even open to, for consideration, but it's the parcel that's between the edge or the row of houses on the east side of the airport, so you access it through Homewood Hills Road, and so it's between the houses and the landfill, if that makes sense. And I think a lot of people living along that line of houses assume, looking out on prairie grasses toward the landfill, that that's open space line. Maybe they know something I didn't know, or they asked when they bought. I didn't know it, and, and it's problematic to me a little bit. I just want to know a little bit more about the process, because for many of the other parcels, they abut areas that would not be considered that starkly commercial right into office. And so I just kind of wanted to maybe have Rick really quickly review what, what's going to happen now, because we're really early in the stages where we have opportunities at different points to, to disagree or to really represent our, our residents, really, in this regard, and also just to let the residents know, when will they be involved and, and know about this to participate.
Mr. Asso?
Yes, mayor, council members, the memorandum of agreement that was entered into towards the late fall, early winter of 2010, set forth a process whereby the city would entertain to pre-zone certain parcels as either airport office or airport commercial. And these are parcels that are owned by MAC and surround or are in their, their airport property. The motivation for doing that was that there was a huge disagreement about whether there was authority to zone in the first place. And we took the position that with respect to non-aeronautical uses, we had the authority to zone. They took the position that we did not have the authority to zone. So in order to preserve our ability to have public hearings and council consideration of the zoning, we suggested a process whereby we would vary from our normal process of not zoning until there was an actual development, to having them identify parcels that they thought were, quote, "potential for development," and that we would then entertain to zone those parcels as commercial or office. And so the map that you received in your packet is a representation of those parcels. There was a similar map in the MOU materials that the council reviewed last year, although it wasn't quite as colorful in terms of setting it out. The map that was prepared last year was done by me, and the map that you have now is done by the planning department, and so it takes away some of the clutter and really identify, you know, really points out those parcels. But I'm looking at the map that we sent out with the MOU, and it shows that parcel, you know, cross-hatched on the east side of the airport. So the point of time at which we're at right now is that on March 28th, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing to consider a comprehensive guide plan text amendment to add those two designations to the comprehensive plan, and a zoning code text amendment to add those zones to the zoning ordinance. Subsequent to that, the Met Council has to approve the text amendment to the comprehensive plan, and because it's more than 80 acres total, they will have to go through a full review and evaluate the impact against all of their system plans. And I've been advised as early as last week that because of that, MAC is considering whether they really are serious about all these parcels and want a full review by the Metropolitan Council. I emphasize the word "potential" because they've really identified every small little parcel or large parcel that they could potentially develop. Some of them have steep slopes and would be very difficult to develop, and so likelihood of all those being developed is, is remote. But so that's the stage that we're at, is Planning Commission considering those text amendments, forwarding it to the Metropolitan Council for a review of the comp plan amendment. It would come to the council on a first reading of those text amendments. If the council approved it, now that would also be a public hearing, if, if the council approved it, and we did not commit in the MOU that you would approve it, we just said that you would undertake to review and consider it. But if the council approved it, then we'd undoubtedly wait for the Met Council to act. If they approved it, then we would bring it back to the council for second reading. So at that point, if that's all approved- So at that point, if that's all approved, then we have a text change to the ordinance. Then MAC would come by with specific legal descriptions for these parcels and requests that the council go through the zoning process. So we would start over again at the Planning Commission. We would have a public hearing. There'd be notices to the neighborhood, and they would explain the zoning for those specific parcels. They may bring all of them forward at the same time. They may decide to bring the one in which they're most interested in forward at that time. I don't think they've decided. That would go to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission would make its recommendation. That would come to you for a first reading of zoning. If you approved the first reading, then it would come back for a second reading. If the second reading is approved, then we're done with the zoning. At that point, then, MAC has what they wanted and we have what we wanted. We wanted the ability to either approve or deny the zoning of those parcels, and they wanted the assurance that if they brought a developer by for a parcel, the developer would know, I've got a zoned piece of property. Now what I'm subject to is the city's site review process. And we, so we wrote that into the agreement, and in fact, with respect to a use such as a gasoline convenience station, we wrote in specific criteria applicable to this location that would be part of the site review process. And again, then you have considerable authority with respect to the site review process as well, and once again, I would repeat, there were no assurances that we were able to give MAC that the council would approve those. It was that we would proceed in good faith as a staff to bring them forward, but as I've advised you on numbers of occasions for matters that you have a public hearing, you cannot make your mind up until you have heard the information at the public hearing.
I just have one piece of concern here, and that is notification. So at that early first pre-zoning meeting, do you envision that if a parcel was included in that package for the pre-zoning piece, that our notification rules would apply? And I guess if, yes, they would, I'd like to consider, especially in Parcel 7, that we go beyond the 500-foot, because if Parcel 7, the way I see it, and I'm not sure, you know, I don't know what the connection is to Pinehurst Trail there, but it's real possible that an office complex would have to be accessed through all those neighborhoods. So to me, notification should be 1,000 feet or something. I'm just concerned that people don't get caught off guard and that we're looking out for the, you know, rights, I guess, in essence, of all of our residents. And so I'm okay with what you said in terms of our involvement. I just want to make sure that our residents are deeply involved throughout the process and that they're notified.
Right, and I had discussions with Mr. Franzen and with our city planner and with the MAC last week. Mr. Franzen was strongly considering a wider area than was normally called for and was relaying that onto the MAC because he was telling them it was $1.25 for each label and that we didn't have the budget for that and they'd have to pay for that. And I don't know if Ms. Jeremiah knows what number has been determined with respect to the notice.
Mr. Franzen did bring this to my attention and seek my advice on this matter, and I did recommend 1,000 feet from the perimeter of the entire airport, not just the individual development parcels, because that led to some neighborhoods getting, you know, some folks noticed and others not. And we have gone as far as 1,000 feet sometimes in the past for items that seem to warrant it. This is a pretty big change, the idea of developing airport land, so I did believe it warranted it, and I do believe that MAC will be willing to go that far and to pay for those notices, so that's my expectation.
Thank you, Your Honor, that's all I needed.
Okay, thank you. That's it, unless somebody else has something to bring up? Is there a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.